Linda, it's nice to see you.
Nice to see you. I think sometimes that that's...
Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the June 12th public meeting of the school committee. This morning's agenda, the agenda is rather light. We'll be discussing the candidates to fill the Director of Finance and Operations position, Facilities position, excuse me. The Director of Finance and Operations position. This is a continuation of the discussions that we started Monday evening where we interviewed the three finalists and then had a discussion afterwards. This morning, our hope is that we will continue that discussion and hopefully decide on a candidate. I'd like to thank RCTV for joining us this morning to record this session. There are, there's very little public input today, but I will certainly open that up to public input, seeing none. Are there reports this morning before we get started? I hope not. Are there questions about the process before we get started?
Yes.
Mrs. Brozki.
It's actually not a question, but a proposal. I was on the screening committee for the school committee for this position, and I thought before we started, it might be wise to spend one minute, under one minute, just reviewing the process to date.
Certainly.
For anyone who's tuning in and hearing this for the first time. So when Mary Delai announced that she would be taking the superintendency in Wilmington, we knew we would have a vacancy. The school committee made a decision that we would hire a, what's the new title, Business Manager?
Director of Finance and Operations.
Director of Finance and Operations, as opposed to an Assistant Superintendentship, which was a position that Mary spent 10 years growing into. The school committee worked with the superintendent, developed a very public process. The school committee appointed one member of the school committee to serve on a screening committee that include staff, community members, parents, administrators. There were 12, there was a large number.
Ten.
Ten people on the screening committee. It was publicly posted. People submitted their resumes, their cover letters, letters of reference. Screening committee had a long and thorough discussion about those candidates, developed interviewed questions, screened them, and put forward three finalists for the position, who interviewed here the other night, and we took it from there. But I do think it's important that the public understand this was a very thorough and public process.
Absolutely. Thank you for sharing that.
And just to add, and the superintendent interviewed the candidate subsequent to our interview.
Thank you.
And the Assistant Superintendent.
And thank you. So I would like to open up this morning's meeting with, an open discussion with the committee on the candidates. I think I would like to first thank the three finalists. We have a very intensive interview process here in Reading. I think we do a very thorough job. We ask a lot of the applicants who are seeking positions here at Reading. So I do want to thank the three finalists for giving up so much time into this process and being so vested in this process. Are committee members ready to offer their opinions of the candidates? Would that be an appropriate place to start? Mrs. Doxer?
I would actually like to hear from the superintendent what he learned from his subsequent interviews and also the reference checks.
Certainly. Dr. Doherty, would you like to share?
Sure. I'll go through one candidate at a time. I think, you know, I echo what Mr. Caruso said, that all three candidates are very strong candidates and have the type of background that you'd be looking for, for this position, in terms of a strong finance accounting background. Patricia Lugo, who currently is in the role in East Bridgewater. I had the opportunity to talk to a couple of her references, one being the current superintendent, who is an interim, and also the previous superintendent, who she worked primarily under during the four years that she was at East Bridgewater. The, what I was told by both is that very strong with the numbers financially, that when she puts up a number and a figure, that they're spot on, that the numbers are extremely accurate. She has had experience being in the role, she's had experience in food service, she's had experience with facilities, transportation. Twice during her career in this role, both in East Bridgewater and in Mashpee, the facilities has actually moved during her tenure to the town side in an effort to save money. It was moved to the DPW. It was done as a cost-saving measure in both communities. The, the current superintendent indicated that the position that she currently is in is getting cut due to budget cuts. East Bridgewater has had several years of budget cuts, and they are now in a position where they have to cut the, this position to fund other positions on the teaching and learning side, curriculum and leadership positions. So that, you know, overall, what I heard is that she does a very good job at what, at the role, in the role that she's in.
Can I?
Absolutely, Mr. Brozki.
So just clarifying, so the person you talked to isn't the reference that we got?
I talked to both, actually.
Oh, you did?
I talked to the previous superintendent, who's retired, and the current superintendent.
Okay.
You did not get a letter of reference from the current superintendent?
Okay, that's what I thought, yeah.
And how long has that interim been in place?
This is his first year.
This is his first year, so he has been?
He's worked with her for about nine, 10 months.
Okay.
Was he from within the district, or?
No, no, I don't think so, no. Michelle Shepard brings other strengths that I think the other two candidates don't have. She certainly has the municipal side experience. So she understands, I should, I should also back up, that all three candidates have a strength in munis, which would be extremely important as they transition over to, to our accounting system, which is, which is munis as well. Patricia Lugo does not use munis right now, but she has had experience in Mashpee. Michelle, Michelle Shepard has more of a municipal experience. She does not have as much of an education experience, but she has done the necessary work through the certification program at Masbo to become a business manager. Her, her record indicates that she is just, this is one of her first opportunities to seek a, a school business manager position. And she also had a very strong reference. I talked to her current supervisor, and he again spoke very highly of her, that she's very competent, that she manages several people in, on the, on the municipal side as Assistant Treasurer. She's found ways to save money. You know, I believe she even talked about in her interview how they, the bond rating went up under her, during her tenure, and it was because of some of the, the measures that she had done. Very dependable, hard-working employee is also what I heard from references. And then Martha Seibert currently is, is in the school district, as you know, as a school business official. She came into the position two and a half years ago, made a conscious effort to move from the private sector to the public sector. She wanted to eventually become a school business official. That, that's her goal. She certainly has very strong recommendations from both internal and, and external. You see, there's a, a cover letter there from Mary Delai, speaking about her qualities. She has a very strong accounting and finance background from previous, previous work that she did. Certainly, one of Martha's strengths is that she is familiar with the district. She understands the accounting system. She understands the budget process. She has played a major role in the development of that, the budget book that you've seen over the last two and a half years. She's played a role in that. So I can certainly answer other questions if people have them about the three candidates.
Other questions for Dr. Doherty? Okay. Yes.
I'm very interested in your feeling about, because you'll be frontline and you'll be working with this person, was there a feeling that you had pros-cons strengths that leans you towards one candidate or another?
If I, if I might, I'd almost like to hold off on that, if it's okay. I'd like to get a sense of where the committee is in our own discussion. Again, this hire is coming from the school committee. This is not the superintendent's hire.
Yeah.
I understand completely that Dr. Doherty is going to be working extremely close with this person, but I think it's important for the school committee to, to have our own discussions before we ask Dr. Doherty what his, if that's okay, respectfully, if that's okay.
It is okay. I'm, I'm willing to.
Mr. Robinson?
I guess, I don't have, just one brief comment. I did, as Dr. Doherty, I, I called reference, some of the ref, or not references, but I called the town accountant who works closely with, with Martha.
Our, our town accountant.
Our town accountant. And, you know, she spoke positively about Martha and her ability to, to, to work with her and her experience in working with her. So I just wanted to let everyone know that, because that position works very closely with the town accountant.
Mrs. Webb?
So I just want to say that I think that it was a great idea. Appreciate the committee being in here this morning at 7:30, that it was a very good idea. Mr. Robinson, Mr. Caruso, I think suggested it, to separate the interview, allow us to do the interviews, and then really have the time to, you know, think about it, allow Dr. Doherty to then give us sort of his, his knowledge. And Mr. Robinson made some phone calls. So I think that that's a very important part of the process. And I, I do feel like it, you, it helped me, because some initial, you know, initial feelings or perspectives as of, was that Monday night?
Yes.
Okay, Monday night. You know, certainly, there were things that I didn't necessarily see and had an opportunity to look a little harder. So I think the three candidates were, are, you know, very different, had very different areas of strength, and it's really the decision, or the biggest thing I think we have to do, is look at what are, what we need right now in, in this position, and, you know, which one of these candidates is really going to give us what we need now and provide the best opportunity long-term, because, you know, we don't want to hire someone to, it's not like we have something to fix. This, this is in good shape. So I just think it was good to allow us that process, and I don't know if we're ready to start talking specifically about the candidates themselves and.
So I'll echo your sentiments, and it was Mr. Robinson's suggestion that we hold off until, until today for this discussion, and I think it was great, because I think it gave a lot of committee members time to reflect on the candidates and for Dr. Doherty to continue his vetting. So I do think it was an excellent idea, but I can't take credit for it. It was Mr. Robinson. I do think now is an appropriate time for us to begin discussions about where the committee, where they sort of are at. Mrs. Brozki?
Thank you. I'll, I'll dive in. So I guess I would start with Michelle Shepard. I think, I was incredibly impressed with her story. I think she's highly competent. I think she brings a very strong set of financial background skills, and I think that her passion to work in a school was really evident, and I, I, I really am impressed with her story. Unfortunately, I think she's up against two people with pretty deep experience in an education business office. And given the, the experience and the quality that we've enjoyed from Mary, I would have a bias towards appointing someone to this position with actual school business experience. So as much as I think she, I think she's going to be a huge asset to a school somewhere, my inclination would be to choose one of the candidates with a background in education business. That, that weighed very heavily in my decision-making process.
I certainly, I agree, certainly agree with that perspective from Mrs. Brozki.
Would you like to continue, or was that your statement?
Sure, I will continue. So I think it was a very challenging decision between Patricia and Martha, because they both bring pretty strong background, and a very strong background in business at the school level. For me, given that we've had some pretty significant changes in administrative leadership over the last year, and that we are going to be bringing in some very major new faces to the high school principalship, to the Director of Student Services, to the Director of Finance and Operations, there, there, I think we're at a moment where continuity is, is particularly important, and I think Martha does bring that. She's worked under Mary for two and a half years. I will be honest, her lack of, her lack of experience is concerning. I'm, it is a concern, but for me right now, the continuity she will bring to the position, the fact that she already knows Reading so well, and she is ready to hit the ground running, puts her pretty high on my list.
Thank you for sharing that. A question, Linda, or?
No, I didn't actually, I'm glad to speak, but Mrs. Webb motioned first.
I've been going to my left a lot this morning. I'd like to give Mrs. Doxer.
Okay. Well, thank you. I'd like to echo the gratitude to the candidates for coming and spending the amount of time that this search process takes in Reading. I've been very impressed, having been a part of the search process for other positions, and this one especially being a televised interview. I think that that takes this process to a new height, and kudos to all three candidates who really personified great personality and professional traits, and I appreciated that, and I, I admire that greatly. And I'd like to echo Mrs. Brozki's feelings about Michelle, and also about the continuity that this, this position I think needs with the change that's been going on in our district. But above and beyond that, I have two other thoughts. One was, I was very impressed with, not only that Martha has been in the district, but also the accolades and her references were very specific about the skills that I think would translate powerfully to taking this ball and running with it. In her references specifically mentioned, she, in her cover letter, she's worked with individuals in preparation of the budget. She has an education background, so she's familiar also with the educational component of writing that budget document, and the needs of the teachers, and she's gone in and she's spoken with the teachers, and with the other people, the other team members in this process. I think that she's been a quick learner and a dedicated worker, was, given kudos for how hard she works and how dependable she was. So the other piece that I want to say is that our district strives to promote learning, not just for the students, but also for the staff, and that I think that when staff show this desire to learn and do so, and shine within the district, that it's a good thing that the district looks at them seriously, that takes this search process back to the beginning, and brings in new people, and looks at the people who are in the district, who are aspiring to another position, looks at them seriously as well as the other candidates. But that, I think that moving within the district is an important opportunity for people who have invested in Reading and put in the work and putting in the learning power, and have that much distance along the learning curve already to be able to hit the ground running. And I think Martha has really shown that. So I'm showing my bias towards Martha. I was impressed with her references, her cover letter, her interview. And I was very impressed also with Patricia, and I feel it's really important to say that. I think that she shows the motivation, she shows the devotion and dedication that would be necessary to come up to speed. But I think this is a very different district than what she has worked in. And so my biases, well, not my bias, my preference is towards Martha, because she's very familiar with this district. She's got good experience in the building process. That was one of my concerns, and her response about working well with people and working, knowing the background and working with a business manager, a building facilities manager. She'll be able to work, I feel confident she'll be able to work well with that
Thank you.
person with that expertise. So I, I feel better about that concern.
Thank you for sharing. Mrs. Brozki?
Thank you. Just one quick point, and I forgot to mention, I think one of the things that I admire about Reading is that we're not only leaders here, we're leaders at the state level. Mary is very well-regarded at the state level. I was impressed that with only two and a half years of experience, Martha's already presented at Masbo. That jumped out at me. So she's already developing that network. She has a very strong, for somebody who's only been here for two and a half years, she's already developed an impressive network at, beyond Reading in this area, that I think would support her very well. That was very impressive to me.
Thank you. Mrs. Webb?
So I'm going to say that initially I was, or at the end of Monday night, I was really on the fence, looking at the two candidates that we've been talking about, Patricia and Martha, and felt that, you know, Patricia's experience as a school business officer, director, was something that we, we really would need at this point, that we need someone with that background. An initial look at Martha's resume, I, I looked at it and said, I, I actually had a, some issues with some very, it looked like short-term jobs. And so from private industry, you know, when you look at a resume, those are the things you look at. And I think that was explained in the interview, that some of those were really sort of company takeover, so they were sort of the same actual company. And when I went back to take a harder look, because my concern with Martha, although she's been here, you know, in the district, so from that perspective, this is a known person who, you know, we can collect information about from people within our own organization, including Mrs. Delai. But I had some concern just about, you know, sort of where she is as a school business assistant. But when I looked a little deeper, so I just want to highlight, there's some things that when you look a little more deeply into her background, things like when she worked for Leslie as the Financial Budget Analyst, you know, that was a $70 million budget, five schools, multiple programs. So, you know, that's certainly a level of experience that is consistent with schools. When she was, worked for CNET, that was an annual operating budget of $85 million, and she did some, I think, in terms of her experience with Starbans Oxley and Internal Controls, that's sort of a very good experience. One of her other jobs, she recruited and hired people, so that's, you know, an important learning skill, experience, creating RFPs, you know, some background with Human Resources, which that's not part of this role now, but I think another set a good background. And I think in one of her more recent positions, she was with Lawrence Eagle Tribune for three years, where she had five managers and 15 associates. So I think, again, one of my, one of my concerns was, you know, we need the person to be able to successfully take this step up to Director. And, you know, given that she had been working for the last two and a half years, really as an individual contributor with Ms. Delai, I wanted to get a better sense of, does the person have the capacity to, you know, be the manager and also work in the public sector, like public with the town and collaboratively with our municipal partners. So, you know, I think that that's, those strengths, and the Masbo piece was important to me in terms of, you know, being a person who is leading edge and innovating. So, you know, her, I guess she decided, two and a half, three years ago, to make that transition from private sector to public sector. And so if you actually look at what her job, her last job was at Lawrence Eagle Tribune, as a, with five managers and 15 associates, the job as an individual contributor here in the school was somewhat of a, a step down for her personally, professionally, in order to get into this, into the schools and into the public sector. So it looks, from all accounts of the recommendations and the work that she's done here, what people know, she's done an outstanding job in these last two and a half years. So again, I had to look a lot more deeply into this, and I think the feedback from Dr. Doherty and Mr. Robinson on their conversations was important to helping me make this decision. But I definitely feel like Martha would be the right person for the district at this juncture.
Thank you. Mrs. Doxer?
Well, no, I was.
Oh, I thought you, oh, you were echoing.
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Certainly.
I guess I would take a moment to very quickly say, I thought the three candidates were very strong. Mrs. Brozki's comment about continuity is what really leads me to think that Martha is the right candidate right now for us. I really do think that she's going to be able to continue the work that Mary started in a more seamless nature than the other two candidates. I think that the other two candidates could certainly come up to speed very quickly, but I do think that Martha gives us that stability that right now is extremely important in, in the central office. I, I do have a concern over experience, and I do have a concern, while the references were excellent, it's rare that I look at a candidate whose references come from the same place. All three references are coming from the same exact location. So it would have been nice to perhaps see a little bit more of a breadth from some of her previous jobs, where I know she was very successful, but it might have been nice to see a more external reference, or a reference from someone that wasn't, well, two people that were leaving Reading. But again, I thought that Martha presented herself extremely well. I thought she was eloquent. I, she, her confidence while speaking, I think is going to be a strength, because there is a lot of public speaking in this position. I'm, I'm very confident that she is going to be able to grow in this position, and I, I really don't have, I don't have significant reservations about moving Martha forward.
I'm done. Mr. Robinson?
So I guess after coming out of the, out of the interviews on Monday night, I, you know, I've been back and forth, but I, I will say, I narrowed it down between Martha and Patricia. I just felt that, you know, they would be better fits for, culturally for what we were looking for. And, you know, I, I would say that, you know, I've really been struggling, and I, I've said it, about the, the experience level and, and, you know, whether that would be a tax, Martha's experience level, whether that would be a tax on, on the superintendent with, with other people. So, you know, as I said, I spoke to the, the town accountant, and, you know, I've also had conversations with, with Dr. Doherty, and, you know, I guess I'm more comfortable with, and that's prob, you know, with, you know, Martha being able to do this on her, more on her own than I thought the other night. You know, I, in terms of Patricia, you know, I, again, I mean, she definitely has more experience, but I think, you know, Mrs. Doxer said it, and, and others, I think at any time when we can promote from within, we should always do that. And this, you know, Martha has satisfied my, my concerns at this point about her ability to hit the ground running, so I would always defer to promoting from within if I can satisfy that, that feeling.
Mrs. Doxer?
I just want to clarify, what I was saying about promoting from within, I, if I didn't say clearly, I think that there still needs to be a process of taking, inviting candidates from outside and seriously considering all of the candidates equally. And then when the person from within, it's, it needs to be considered their experience within, and in terms of the job that they've done, the references they've accrued, and the expertise and the learning potential that they have, but not just because they've worked within. I don't think you need to clarify that. Okay, I'm sorry. We had a process, yeah, no, I mean, I, I didn't take it that way at all. Thank you.
Certainly. More discussion from the committee? No, I'm seeing none at this time. Would a committee member like to make a motion at this time? this time? Mr. Robinson?
I'd like to move that we enter into negotiations with Martha Seibert for the position of Director of Finance and Operations for the Reading Public Schools.
Second.
Second. Is there a discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are we ready to take a vote? All those in favor of the motion by Mr. Robinson? Opposed? The motion count is five zero. That's wonderful. Thank you very much for that open dialogue and that discussion. The next step in the process will be negotiating with Ms. Seibert and continuing that process. A question to the committee is, I feel as though those negotiations should be done in executive session with respect to non-union, a matter with non-union personnel. Dr. Doherty, is that, your understanding is?
That is correct.
Excellent. Should we go into executive session now to have those discussions? Excellent. Do I have a motion, please?
Move. Oh, thank you.
Move to enter into executive session to conduct strategy session with respect to non-union personnel and to return to open session at approximately 8:30.
Great. Mrs. Doxer?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote. Mrs. Doxer?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Barowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Caruso, yes. Thank you. We're adjourned for 25 minutes. The committee met and discussed strategy towards respect of non-union personnel, and we are returning to public session to adjourn. Is there a discussion before we adjourn? I probably missed something. Did I miss something?
I think we.
I didn't. Do I have to do all that again? Because that was really.
To indicate that Dr. Doherty and Mrs. Barowski will move forward with the employment contract negotiation.
Thank you. That bears repeating in case that. Dr. Doherty and Mrs. Barowski will begin negotiation with Martha. And again, we're excited about the opportunity here. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.